We are all set, let me know.
You're all set, have a good meeting.
Thank you. We are calling to the board on the meeting of the City of Zoning Board of Appeals for this Thursday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. In the Select Board Hearing Room and at Town Hall, uh, at Town Hall and we will go via Zoom. City of Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there was a disagreement. We value the work of this community and we want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel that we're respected. We ask our committee members of all who participate to commit to these standards of support and respect our community. Uh, as we said, uh, this is both, uh, in person and via Zoom. The meeting is being recorded and will be available, uh, and viewable on City of Community Television and Facebook Live. And the recorded meeting will be available following day on Channel nine. Uh, with that, we will call, quote unquote, uh, the first application review from December twenty twenty-three. Catherine Eastland, three twenty-six, Central Avenue, City of Mass. Uh, we do have someone here on that.
Um, yes, I'm here for me to leasing a metal from Lorimer to leasing Paris. It's my understanding that Jeff indicated to me the need of request.
You want some more?
That is correct.
Okay. So we didn't know if you were going to come and speak on that issue, so thank you. Uh, we have a request for continuance until the April meeting. Is that right, Liz?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So with that, we will, uh, I will make a motion that this be continued for the April meeting. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll see you in a little bit.
Yep, thank you.
Um, on the second application, Angela Stout, see, uh, Carol, Steve Bjorkland requesting special permanent finding. Request is NGL chapter forty-eight, section six, section thirty-two, zoning by law and/or any other legal report of appeals. May grant to allow the partial conversion of existing garage to accessory, accessory dwellings. Name and address for the record.
Steve Bjorkland, eight sixty-one Main Street, Norwell, Mass.
Mr. Bjorkland, I'm going to ask this. Why are you here? And, and I reason I ask it is because, uh, my understanding is that this is a accessory dwelling. And the, you guys have gone to the planning board pursuant to our dwelling by law to request, uh, to, to request the accessory dwelling. So what relief are you asking for from this body that has not already been granted appropriately by? Uh, the lot rights?
I am here because the lot that is in question has ninety-eight point two seven feet of frontage. The lot width rather than a hundred feet that's required in the district. So this is probably a little easier than the last application I had in front of you guys.
I understood. So, so your point being that although they have approved the accessory dwelling involves, uh,
It's a lot.
Um, because this is a non-conforming lot as to front, frontage and width, you are seeking a special, uh, approval, the special permit. As for?
Orifying.
Orifying. Uh, so, uh, in this case, I, I will make this very simple and move to approve and adopt, uh, the special permit that has been granted by the planning board for this property. Uh, and I'm finding that the, uh, the fact that this will be built on a lot with ninety-eight point two seven feet of frontage and, and a ninety-eight point two seven width, lot width, um, uh, introduces no new non-conformities. And, uh, to the extent that it intensifies any existing non-conformities, those are not substantially more different than the neighbors. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I, we didn't take public comment on this because this has already been approved by the planning board. I can, I, I, I will ask, however, did anybody have anything to say about this? I, I apologize for that.
No hands up.
No hands up and nobody in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Public meeting of the planning board, so I think they didn't include the planning board. There were comments at the planning board, so they were addressed.
Right, and, and again, those were addressed. I saw the, the, uh, the opinion and finding. Uh, thank you. Awesome, sir. All right, uh, third application. Adams Equity Partners, LLC, Carol, Jeff Delisi, Esquire, Lorimer, Delisi, twenty-eighth New Brickway, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, ten point two B of City of Zoning Bylaws and/or any other legal report of data may grant to create Lot Two. For private moving to the address on one two five Summer Street, City of Mass. Name and address for the record.
Matt Mitchell from Lorimer to Delisi and Paris. Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I, I will say Eli Adams is a member of the LLC. It is also, I believe, here.
Here, online. Okay. Awesome, terrific gentleman. So can you run us through this with visuals? Because we're, uh, we were trying to piece, all of us were trying to piece this together from the plot plan and it was a little bit difficult to see kind of what's going on and what's happening here. So, well, anyone, either one.
Yep, absolutely. Don't put it up on the screen or I can put it on board, either one. Is it easier to put it up on the screen?
I'm not.
Okay, all right. You can put it on the board. We have a.
You want me to take this down then?
It is best to put it on the screen for your Zoom audience. So Elizabeth, if you have it, yes, please share.
Thank you.
While, while she pulls that up here, the application that's before you tonight is a request for a fifty-foot frontage lot.
Right.
Uh, the property in question being one sixty-five Summer Street. Uh, the lot itself is in the Arbor One Zoning District. Um, it's in the Water Resource Protection District. Uh, it's approximately a hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-two square feet in overall size, this property. There's an existing home. There's an existing home, uh, right here, number one sixty-five Summer Street. Uh, the property was previously divided a number of years ago, um, by this line right here that you see. Uh, and also, interestingly enough, the town line, the town of Norwell and the town of Situate, uh, bisects this lot right here. Okay?
So just to, are you looking to make, most basic question is, are you looking to maintain Lot One and Lot Two? Or two lots, or are you looking to merge the two lots effectively into one?
We're looking to make one new buildable lot as shown as Lot Two on this plan.
Okay, and that encompasses?
Lot Two encompasses this area here. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, Lot Two is in size more than two times the upland area. It's ninety-four thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet in size total. Eighty thousand two hundred and sixty-two square feet of that is upland land area. Lot Two also has frontage on Summer Street on the left side of the plan there. The frontage along Summer Street is a hundred and seventeen point four seven feet.
So this was one lot that you're trying to divide. Again, I'm just.
It was, it was a lot with a house on it that had a separate parcel of land.
Right.
That effectively is merged because they're owned by the same owner.
And, and you're trying to change the boundaries now. So there will be a different Lot One and a different Lot Two.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand. You're, you're moving, because again, the dotted and the, the lines are a little difficult.
So.
So you're moving, you're basically moving the lot lines around out of this merged parcel, these two parcels that were merged because of common ownership.
Correct.
Got it.
So. So this Lot One is a fully compliant zoning lot. We would not be in front of the zoning board for Lot One. Will go to the planning board seeking an A and R endorsement to recreate those lot lines. We're seeking the approval of the zoning board only for Lot Two as a fifty-foot frontage lot. And you may ask, why are you asking for a fifty-foot frontage lot when we have in excess of a hundred feet of frontage?
Sure.
We have more than forty thousand square feet of land area. And the reason is, is with a conventional lot in Situate, you need a lot width of a hundred feet from the road all the way back to where the house gets built. And we can't maintain that. At this minimum point, we choke down to about ninety-four feet wide. So with a fifty-foot special permit lot, you're allowed to have a minimum of fifty feet of frontage maintained fifty feet back as long as you have twice the land area. So we meet all of that criteria. That's why we're seeking the special permit on Lot Two only.
And you, you haven't set the house. So we're assuming that the house on Lot Two, right, will be conforming as to all setbacks.
Yes, the house on Lot Two would be conforming to all setbacks. We've shown a graphic location of where it would be. We don't have an actual footprint at this point.
Okay. All right. That was super helpful. Um, and again, on this plan that I have in my hand, it's the solid line, the thins.
It's the bold solid line.
It's the bold solid line.
Correct.
Not the thin solid line, which is the old.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Sure. Um, Bob?
Uh, no real questions. I assume there's a couple of more steps. As Greg said, getting A and R from the planning board and deciding on getting, and getting permission for access to Lot Two, which doesn't cross the wetlands area.
That, that was going to be, that is actually my real, real question on this, which is, how are you getting into Lot Two when the Summer Street, the, a good portion of the Summer Street frontage looks like it's in wetlands?
Sure.
That, that was there for us.
Sure. So backing up one step, this is our first step in a multi-step process. Um, after we hopefully receive your approval, we would have to go to the planning board in both Norwell and the planning board in Situate to see both of their approvals. Uh, the answer regarding the access, access is going to be over an existing driveway to one sixty-five Summer Street, which is in the town of Norwell. Norwell allows by right common driveways, um, up to a hundred feet in length. So you'll see our intention is to come in with a common driveway right here.
Through Lot One.
Through Lot One and then an easement to get back to the back portion of, um, Lot Two where you would get built the house.
So no, no curb cutting situation?
No curb cutting situation.
All right, uh, anything else, Bob, at this point? I'll open it up. Comment, public commentary in the room first. Um. Steve Bjorkland again. Uh, Steve. Actually, I don't think these two lots have merged. I think they're actually just modifying the plan that they had. Because the plan, original plan was put on record. This is a better lot than what was originally approved. I do think that they have to start with lots. Okay? Uh, yes, ma'am, name and address for the record.
Uh, Amy Spencer, Forest, one fifty-nine Summer Street. May I ask that you, um, point out the driveway access as well as the lot lines from the other side so that those of us in the audience can see it very briefly?
Oh, because you were standing. Followed that as I'm now.
That's okay.
Yeah, so this whole line right here represents the proposed lot line for the existing house.
Okay.
Existing house state. This here becomes the new back lot, Lot Two, um, with a new home being constructed somewhere in this vicinity. Right now, serving one sixty-five, there are two curb cuts. The driveway is kind of a horseshoe-shaped driveway. Our intention is to close off the driveway closer to Situate and to utilize the driveway further into Norwell as the prominent driveway, which will split off to the house out back and continue straight to the existing homes.
Yeah, that's next. Uh, commentary, questions from folks online?
Not here yet.
Okay. Um. So any comment, these would be Mr. Bjorkland's comment, or any, any comment by behalf, again, on Mr. Bjorkland's comment and whether these two lots have merged and whether you even think merger is necessary in light of the process you're going to go through to get the lot lines redrawn. They are, as you said, under common ownership, so I assume you can get that done through a transaction.
Yes.
Um, so this is all, basically, all you're asking us to do at this point in light of the process and, uh, who's correcting, I'm, I'm wrong, is to approve basically this plan, assuming everybody else that needs to approve this plan or fix this back. It's in an oversimplification, or?
In an oversimplification. We're, we're asking you to approve Lot Two as a fifty-foot frontage lot.
Yeah, right, assuming, assuming Lot Two came on, come in, born into existence to whatever other uh, mechanisms you need to accomplish that, right? Because you want separate title to Lot Two, right? You're going to need the, the easements and all of that in place.
Correct.
Okay. Um. Any more questions? Yes, ma'am, please, name, name and address for the record.
Tracy, not at one sixty-one Summer Street. Just wanted to clarify, the easements are on one sixty-five, no other properties in that area?
Correct, only on one sixty-five.
That's what it shows, but that's a good question. Okay, um, on that, then, from my standpoint, it's each boat will be straightforward. Um, on the application of, of Adams Equity Partners, uh, Carol, Jeff Delisi, Lorimer, Delisi and Paris, on New Brickway, Situate, requesting special permit finding, uh, in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, section six, nine point two B of City of Zoning Bylaws and/or any other legal report of data may grant to create Lot Two. A, uh, a fifty, just, uh, a so-called fifty-foot frontage lot, shown as Lot Two on the proposed Morse engineering plan dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Um. And again, this is a, a finding, so, uh, wanting to bring in special permit. Uh, but I think other than that, I think there's not, uh, I, I move that we grant for request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, you guys write something up?
Yeah, I'll do a look at it. Yeah. Thanks very much.
Yeah, this was, I mean, you did all the right steps, right? Lot twice aside, fifty foot, ninety fifty curb cuts. But, but, yeah, you guys know the hoops it's going to make happen.
Good luck. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, you will go to our fourth application of Kathy and Frank J. Nelson. Nine Collier Road, requesting a special permit time in accordance with NGL thousand forty-eight, section six, section eighteen, Lot Two, City of Zoning Bylaws and/or any other legal report of field may grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conform, single-family dwelling at nine Collier Road. Uh, name and address for the record.
One more.
The record, Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering. Representing the property owners Kathy and Frank Nelson, who are attending via Zoom tonight. Also with us in the audience is the architect for the project, Alyssa Jones. Were before you tonight, seeking a special permit in accordance with zoning by law, section eight, ten point two, in Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, finding for the raise and rebuild of a home located at nine Collier Road. Nine Collier Road being out in the third clip neighborhood. Uh, the property is in the R three residential zoning district. It is divided on the north, south, and west side by developed single-family homes. It fronts on the Atlantic Ocean to the east. The existing home at the site was built originally in eighteen ninety, although it went through significant renovations in the early nineties. Uh, the existing home is approximately twenty-eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. The lot itself conforms with lot area. The lot is large for the neighborhood. It's nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-one square feet. But the non-conformities out there with respect to lot frontage, the lot has nineteen point seven and five feet of frontage where a hundred is typically required. The house, how it's currently built, is thirty-eight point nine seven feet of lot width where a hundred is typically required. The front yard setback exists at sixteen point eight or thirty is the requirement. In the side yards, the left side yard exists at zero feet and the right side yard at twenty-two feet. The proposal here is to take down the existing structure in its entirety and construct a new one in its place. It'll be a new, single-family residence. It's largely in the same location, although we pulled it back from the street um, and extended it a little further to the north. The new home is larger in size, it's forty-eight hundred and twenty-two square feet, which represents a sixty-eight point three percent increase. With respect to the non-conformities, we obviously don't change the frontage of the lot, but the width is more compliant, where the house is positioned as sixty-four and a half versus the existing thirty-eight point nine. The front yard setback is brought into compliance, the existing being at sixteen point eight. Our proposal is thirty-six point one for front yard setback. Our side yards on the left-hand side are in further compliance, although still non-conforming. Existing at zero, we're bringing the house to a five-foot side yard setback. And the right side, existing at twenty-two, we are reducing to sixteen feet, which does fully comply side yard being an eight-foot requirement in the district. Uh, we're seeking a special permit and finding. Uh, we feel it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. There are homes of similar size and similar setbacks. We haven't created any new non-conformities. We've corrected a non-conformity or further back than the existing home, uh, sits today. Turn it over to you.
Right, uh, first question to the board. From what I can see. Bob, commentary on this. Um, question on the garage, where is it structurally connected to the house as it's now constructed?
The house right now?
Yeah. In other words, is, is the garage an integral part of the house, not separate?
It's attached to the house.
The reason I ask that is that's, that's the, uh, encroachment on the side yard setback. And I would have a question, if it weren't the house approaching on the side yard setback. Uh, I think I would hesitate to be positive about further encroachment that's shown with these sort of jobs along that property line. Uh, you know, when I looked at this plan, not having the floor plan, of course, um, it seems like it would be relatively easy to reconfigure the footprint so that, uh, that an encroachment wasn't necessary. Obviously, I leave that to the architect. But there's a couple of things that are happening. One is the encroachment itself and the other is the proximity to the property line of the proposed building and drainage issues. Uh, I see a stormwater basin just to the left of that property line, which means that's a lower area. Seems to go right up and a butt. The, uh, the dividing line between the two properties. I know we get, especially if the rainy sort of period that we've had, we get in our office, um, several calls a week, a lot of letters agreed by stormwater runoff to adjacent properties, either during construction or adjacent properties that have recently could start getting regraded so that those, those people home, you know, the, so they're getting a lot more stormwater than they typically get, whether it's in their yards or in their basements. Uh, I'd like to see all possible measures taken in construction and design of this project to prevent that kind of phone call uh, coming from the haze up the street. So that's, that's basically my thought.
Sure. Uh, I just took a look online at the pictures that were provided with the listing. This property sold fairly recently, last year. Uh, the garage certainly is attached to the house. It's, it's a part of the house.
Yeah.
Very fair question. We, again, this is the first step of many that we'll have to do. Uh, we will, and we have filed, I believe, with the Conservation Commission. We're going to have a public hearing process with them. Uh, drainage will be a, a large talk concern with the Conservation Commission. Um, typically, we're putting infiltration structures in, typically, we're infiltrating roof tri-wells. Uh, I would expect all of that with the conservation. Uh, questions from the people in the room? Yes, please, name and address for the record.
Forty days, I'm three, I like a road. Uh, I just wanted to make a first statement, uh, as to your letters to the north. Uh, we have no, um, issue with the home the way that it is laid out, um, with the exception of one request. Given the extreme closeness to our house, which gives us fire hazard concern coming wind up there. Um, we ask the board to consider a condition to put in, um, that the mechanics for the home, such as like the generator and the AC units, not be placed on the north or northwest end of the new home, so that they would be right under and next to our house. So.
Uh. Would comment? We would be fine with that. Okay. Good to know. So, uh.
Um, I mean, I think we'll. I, I, um, I don't want to agree to that. But yeah, I think we'll agree to meeting the required setbacks for the AC units and the generator, but I'm not sure if we want to promise we're here, what we've been committed to.
So we have, sometimes we have, we have a request, right? You know, the tradition, we want to know.
Can, can we come back to that one and give any additional comments?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
But I just throwing that out there.
Yep.
Right? Um, any comments on, um, um, from the folks online? Yeah. Right. Um, if you guys want to, if you guys want to focus, I'm actually okay with continuing this to the end um, of today, so give you a little time to discuss that and see if that's something that you can accomplish. Because again, the extent we can help some folks out. Uh, obviously, this is a big improvement from a fire hazard standpoint to where it was. It was right on the property line, now it's backed away. That being said, we, we all are aware of what has happened down by the water with the houses being close together and fires. Um, anything we can, we can do to avoid that, general speaking, I think it's a good thing. Uh, so, uh, why don't you guys, so I will move that we continue this to the end of the meeting so that there can be a discussion, uh, amongst the audience.
Second.
All in favor?
George, excuse me, can I just input?
Yeah.
Move closeness.
Yep.
Part of the discussion. Uh, there is a building code reform that any, or shares the house which is within five feet of the property line. I don't know if this is or not, I see one dimension that says five feet. Um, maybe that's, maybe that's the idea, five feet or more like. Otherwise, it would need to be, uh, the wall itself would need to be fire rated. That may or may not come into play here.
Right, if, if the wall is within five feet.
It's got to be even side five.
Inside five, right.
If it's, if it's exactly five feet, which is what I'm seeing here, but I thought it would.
Okay.
Our proposal is five feet or greater along that entire line.
Right, which would not under the building code require a fire rate.
That's correct.
Okay, but that is something that we can think of. Why don't you guys discuss it? All right, we will continue this till the end. We will listen to the other application and I'm happy to hear your vote.
Thank you.
Okay?
That will be.
Or, or, you know. Okay, or, or, you know, whatever you want. Okay, so we'll keep that to the end of the meetings, and then we will count. And we will go to the fifth and final application of Michael and Mary Phipps Millik, 12 Forest Park, Florida, to their agent, Paul Meravito, who's probably online, of PLS Ross Engineering Company, 687, named due barwell, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, section six, and eight, 10.2, the Citri Zone Bylaw, to allow the raise and reconstruct of a pre-existing mansion on Seacoast Avenue dwelling at 62 Gilson Road. Yes.
I spoke with Paul earlier this afternoon. He has a hearing before the historical commission at seven o'clock at the library. They promised they'd get him out in 10 minutes. They obviously did not. So, that's all I know.
I understood. He was, he was hopeful that he was going to be here on time, and it is not his fault. He is not here. We appreciate that. The historical commission is going to take hours long. They're going to take, um, okay, well, if he is not here until after we hear the fourth application and they come back to us, we will, we will continue this in the next, the next meeting. Now, we'll be away from for a few minutes. Um, so other business, we can move on to the other business, which is not the public commentary, but it is clear that we can hear about it. We had an approval of meeting minutes from the, was it, remind me, I have a sheet.
Uh, from November.
November meeting. Um, I grant them, I'm fine with them. I will make a motion that we approve the November meeting minutes.
Sorry?
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. And then we had four, hold on, CDA decisions?
Yes.
I have on my sheet.
Melissa?
Yeah, why, I had you settled, and I had, like, in mind here.
Two Ocean Avenue?
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, what?
I, I, I move that we approve the two Ocean Avenue CDA decisions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fabulous. Seventy Glades?
I move we approve the Seventy Glades Road, CDA decision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seventy Four B Glade?
Forty Four B Glade. I move that we approve the Seventy Four B Glade Road decision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, seventy-four and seventy-four C Glades?
So, I move that we approve the final decision, Seventy Four, Seventy Four C Glade Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those are all approved.
Perfect, thank you very much.
On that note, we will, not an adjourn, just going to take a pause until either Mr. Miller, you know, can get here.
Gentlemen, just a quick question. 326 Central App, what's happening today?
So, 326 Central App was continued.
Oh, I thought it was continued until this week.
It was, and we had a request for a continuance till the April meeting due to applicants unavailable.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
I came, I came, I thought it was today, yes.
It was. It's on the schedule. We received that request. We handed that in the first 35 seconds of the meeting.
And of course, I'm here, I was.
And, and you got here about a minute after that. So, so, so that's, so that's what, so that will be on for the April.
Okay.
I will see.
Absolutely.
Maybe revisit that for a minute. Making a decision on the timing of the decision for 326, request within 30 days, goes to the 90?
Yes, uh, maybe we should make a motion that I
That's great, because it's 90.
You're up.
I don't know, it's up to you all.
It was a request that we move 30 days, little short on the time for the decision, assuming the
Your opinion is important.
To be a meeting before the rest of the, I move, I, I move that we reduce the, the time. What then? Or the second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So thank you for the little bit of point.
Thank you.
So, Meravito?
Good evening.
Good evening, good to see you. We are happy you could make it. We are happy that the planning board allowed you, I mean, the historical permission allowed you to leave. And if you're here with us now. All right, so we have in front of us 62 Gilson Road. This is the raise and reconstruct, right?
Yes.
All right.
This is the, uh, I can afford raising when you're direct on the phone, one minute, plus. My level. This house was built in 1940, the family, the fifth generation, double generations. The proposed and the raise and reconstruct, depending on site plan is limited, which showed the existing investment, which is involved in the shed. And as opposed to reconstruct, see the family dwelling, the same lot, the shed would be removed. And the house needs all, all the required setbacks. The lot is undersized at 5,348 square feet, and the frontage is only eight, it's only 60 feet. But again, the structure has been designed to be placed on the lot, but inside the rear yard setbacks conforming. The front yard setback in the front home is 12.2. We're proposing to move it back to 12.3.
So we have a non-conforming lot, that's the area with the frontage. We have an existing home which is not conforming, the front yard setback. All the other setbacks aren't conforming. They will continue to be conforming, although moved.
There will also be a positive increase to both floor area by 230%. That the king is storing home now, there were the two stories.
Stack it up. Okay. Uh, non-reserve protection. Not in the flood of flame, which is good. So really, no new non-conformities. Just good. Uh, okay.
Let's see, your frontage and lot width?
Well, at the existing front yard setback, right?
That's what I'm getting upset.
In the front yard setback, which is really, is only changing, I mean, it's completely fine, right? Uh, and then everything else is going to stay conforming. So a little out, a little up. All right, question from the board. Bob?
No, looks very straightforward to me. I can't see any problems in all of this.
It, it grows in the one direction, it can, the two directions it can grow, right? Go in one direction, it can go up. It's going to do that. Um, anybody in the audience? In the room? Anybody online?
Yeah.
Okay, so on. So on the application of Michael and Mary Philip Phipps Millik, 12 Forest Park, Evervy, Florida, the agent, former, Meravito, PLS Ross Engineering Company, Citri, we need, we need normal mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, section six, section eight, 10.2, the Citri Bylaws, and any other relief of the Board of Field and Grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-comforming single-family dwelling at 62 Gilson Road. I move definitely approve the proposed raise and reconstruct pursuant to the plan by Gating Consulting data generated in 2024, and that the board find the proposed plan introduces no new non-conformities and to the extent that it compensates any existing non, non-conforming, those are not substantial, negative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here.
It's interesting.
Yeah. Great, all right, thanks, sir.
We'll be proud of that. You'll.
All right. Okay, on that, good job. We had enough in perfect timing. On that note, we will recall, call again, the fourth application, Kathy A. and Frank J. Nelson, Nine Collier Road, Citri Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, section six, and section eight, 10.2, the Citri Zoning Bylaws, and/or any other relief of the Board of Field and Grant below to this, to the pre-existing non-comforming, single-family dwelling at Nine Collier Road, Citri Mass. Name and address for the record, one more time.
Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering, representing the applicant. The comment was made from the butter haze regarding locations of AC units and a generator. We went out in the hallway. We looked at the location where they would be desired on the site. What they were looking at is here for the generator location, which is the northeasternmost corner of the house. I would, I'll flip this around to the northeastmost corner of the house for the generator, and then
So the area where the patio, where you have the patio?
Not on the patio, but in Not on the patio, but off the north end of the house there.
Okay, which is approximately from the lot line?
Approximately 20 feet from the lot line, so it's well inside of the building envelope, which is eight feet. We'd add that that entire wing of the house there is compliant with respect to the zoning setback, eight feet to the lot line.
Okay.
The location of the AC unit that we'd like to propose is right in here. Again, that is compliant with an eight-foot setback to the property line for the AC units at that location as well.
All right, so if, if we do this with an AC unit at least eight feet from the lot line and a generator at least 20 feet from the lot line, would, from your standpoint, would that be acceptable?
The AC units, eight feet, certainly. The generator, I can grab my scale. I left it in the hallway. Just to double check, the 20-foot, it certainly is 15 feet.
Right.
It's, it's at least 15 feet. I can tell you that.
You know what? I'm okay with that. That's I, I mean, that's within, that's within all the required setbacks, right? So by right, theoretically, you could have gone, you know, the house was situated differently. All right, so, any other comments? Beautiful. So, I love when we can make everybody happy. Uh, so I move that on the fourth application of Kathy A. and Frank J. Nelson, Nine Collier Road, Citri Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, section six, and section eight, 10.2, the Citri Zoning Bylaws, and I have the relief of the Board of Field and Grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-comforming family dwelling on Collier Road. I move that we approve the proposed ra, raise and reconstruct pursuant, pursuant to the plan by Morse Engineering data. It's not the, I want to get sure of the right one, right? 118, 2024, as revised on February 7, 2024, with the condition that the eight, the proposed AC unit be situated at least eight feet from the, what would we call that, the northwest lot, lot line?
Yes.
All right, and that the proposed generator be situated at least 15 feet on set, on set northwest lot line. And that the proposed raise, raise and reconstruct introduces no new non-conformities. And to the extent that it compensates any existing non-conformities, those non-conformities are not currently working on the main.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. You're very welcome. Good evening. Great work from you together.
Excuse me, I have a seventy-three, I think, that's the biggest. Yes. Then, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, that way.
It's in the file.
Yep, loaded in the file. It will be in the opinion. Elizabeth, any other business? Sounds like we
I believe we have, that is, for the evening.
Uh, motion adjourned?
Second.
Is adjourned?